6:00 PM, Monday, July 15. I will call to order this meeting of the Winuski City Council. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Thomas Brenner.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, next up is public comments. We have no public in the room or online. Oh, public comments not next. Agenda review is next. We do have a proposed addition to this evening's agenda. Golden Hour Gift Co. submitted too late for a sidewalk permit. Would like to add this on the end of the agenda for discussion to give an indication of action we would then take formally at our next meeting.
Sure.
Someone want to make a motion to add a new item H?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, agenda updated. Now our public comment. No one is present. So we will move to the consent agenda. We have our meeting minutes from July 1st, the payroll warrant from June 23rd to July 6th, accounts payable for July 11th, our disability pride month resolution, uh, the Vermont Clean Water State revolving loan agreement and resolution, and transfer of North Unit Lot 7D. Are there any concerns about items on this evening's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion.
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Aurora. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to council reports. Let's start at your end, Charlie.
It will be quick. I have no significant updates this week.
Thank you, Thomas.
Um, so Downtown Winuski was not able, actually did not meet, had to postpone for an event. So we'll be meeting later next week. Um, Safe, Healthy Connected tried to meet, but there was not a quorum, which created some conversation that I shared with the mayor and the city manager, but I'll share with the rest of council as well, just about, um, trying to increase our, um, efforts to advertise to the community to join, um, the different commissions. So, um, the mayor mentioned that on her next episode of, um,
In the World of Winuski.
In the World of Winuski, uh, potentially councilors can maybe go on, go on with her and talk about the different commissions and why it's great to be part of a commission. Um, and there are some other things up in the air, like tabling at farmers markets or maybe doing something on Instagram. So just some other ideas to try to get folks, um, involved and, and know that the commissions even exist. Cause I think probably a good amount of people do not even know that we have the commissions. Um, so that was, actually ended up being a good meeting, even though we couldn't have the meeting. So we had a nice conversation. And then also last week I met with a bunch of, uh, local Winuski business owners, as well as the chief of police, the chief of the fire department and, um, folks from the Howard Center. Uh, the business community has convened this group, uh, for a couple of months now. Um, they'll be convening again next August. And they were just talking about, um, concerns and also good things that are happening in the community and where the business owners need help from the different organizations that were represented. Um, it is at nine in the morning, so it makes it difficult for many folks to attend. But if any of my fellow councilors are able to make the next one, uh, Laura, who owns, uh, Missouri and Onion City advertises that event on Front Porch Forum. Um, and once I find out the date, I can also let you all know. Um, I just think it was really insightful to hear directly from the business owners what they've been experiencing, um, in our community. And regular update for Downtown Winuski, just check out their website. They still have a lot of things going on. So downtownwinuski.org, um, the, uh, Sunday services and Winuski Wednesdays. There're just different themes going on. So take a look and see what you can make. Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas. All right, uh, Finance Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more thing. I really wanted to congratulate Councilor Judge, uh, he got married recently.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, we got married last Thursday.
You left it out of your update.
I didn't know how personal we were supposed to be. There's decorum in this room.
That's true, that's true.
But no, thank you very kindly. Um, we're very happy. We're gonna honeymoon in winter when it's a time to be away from here.
Nice, nice.
That's smart, that's smart.
All right, well, mine's not that exciting, but, um, Finance Commission had their meeting last week, um, in which Angela and Elaine presented, uh, a similar presentation to our strategies and priority session to gain their, like, public insight on the data. And that input is being used for the August, my August newsletter submission, which will share this data and our findings, um, publicly. And, and we'll have the data publicly available to residents as well. Their next meeting in August will engage in discussion about community outreach ahead of this year's budget process to get more input early on before, um, goal setting. Planning Commission is meeting, uh, this Thursday. Uh, for administrative tasks, appointment of the Director of City Planning Chairs and Work Plan Review. The inclusionary zoning replacement discussion will be tabled until their August meeting to give our new Director of City Planning time to get up to speed. Um, and finally, Elaine and I are both participating in a, um, Public Safety Policy Committee for the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Um, alongside various public safety professionals and select board members from around the state. The work is intended to inform VLCT's policy positions for the next legislative session, but is also providing useful learning and collaboration for us to bring back here locally. Um, and I shared some meeting notes with council via email. That's it for me.
Thanks. Um, so no significant updates since the last airport, um, mission meeting. Um, other than I did ask the aviation director, um, about points of contact for, um, questions we've received about the fire suppressant release. He shared contact information for the Army National Guard and South Burlington Wastewater Treatment Facility. Those are the primary entities tasked with, um, responding to and, uh, ongoing follow-up, for any cleanup needs, uh, following that release, home release. The next meeting is the first Wednesday of August. Um, it'll be at 4:00 PM. It's hybrid. On tonight's agenda, we, uh, council will be reviewing, um, an applicant, uh, we're proposing to take over the role that I've held on the airport. That will be coming up shortly. CSWD moved up their regular July meeting, um, to this past week. It primarily focused around, uh, approval to secure funds for, um, equipment for the organic recycling facility, as well as ongoing negotiations for the material recovery facility. No other updates on that at this point in time. The Municipal Infrastructure Commission will meet this coming Thursday, um, at the Community Room, um, at the pool. And that will be hybrid, but, uh, we certainly always encourage people to attend in person if they can. Uh, it'll be at 6:30. We're mainly welcoming new applicants, uh, well, we're mainly welcoming, uh, a new representative from the Inclusion and Belonging Commission. And we welcome new applicants because we have multiple vacancies. So second, uh, Deputy Mayor Brenner's comments earlier about soliciting additional, um, applicants to participate in. We'll be reviewing any updates on the Fountain Dion scoping since their May meeting, as well as, um, the FY '25 strategies and priorities. That's all right. I don't have any big updates, so August is going to be the next Inclusion and Belonging Commission. That's August 15th at 6:00 PM. We will be joined by our Housing Initiatives Directors to speak with the commissioners. So definitely feel free to join in that conversation. We're also, uh, open for applications. We have one full member and two alternates that are open. So also interested in more ways to engage and please reach out if you are interested.
All right, thank you, everyone. Moving on to city updates.
Okay, the Winuski Memorial Library is temporarily closed, uh, due to an unforeseen facility issue. Uh, it will be closed, uh, temporarily until further notice, however. As part of the process related to the sale of the O'Brien Community Center building to the Champlin Housing Trust, routine environmental soil and air testing was recently performed at the Winuski Memorial Library. That found levels of PCE or tetra-ethyl ethylene above indoor air quality standards. This is likely due to a dry cleaning business formerly located at the site. While the levels are not high enough for the State Department of Environmental Conservation to require us shut down the space, out of abundance of caution, the city of Winuski has decided to close the library until an air purifying system is installed. Uh, that has been installed and, um, air quality testing is underway. Several other locations were tested at the O'Brien Community Center. And at this time, the only area of concern was under the library. At this time, there's no data that the public, that the rest of the building is. Appreciate your patience while we work with the Champlin Housing Trust to install the ventilation system and complete further testing. Uh, limited library services are currently available at the O'Brien Community Center. To learn more, please visit winuskiVT.gov slash library. The statewide primary election is on Tuesday, August 13th. Voting will take place at the Winuski Senior Center from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. That is located at 123 Barlow Street. To learn more about the election, view sample ballots, register to vote, request an absentee ballot and more, please visit winuskiVT.gov slash vote or call 8002 to, um, oh my God, 655-6410. On February 20th, the Winuski City Council approved changes to Chapter 17. That's the building registry. Uh, Chapter 17 of the city's municipal code to include new language that addresses short-term rentals in Winuski. These changes went into effect, into effect July 1st of this year, 2024. Short-term rental property owners must now submit a license application for each unit of short-term rental. More information about this process, the short-term rental license application and frequently asked questions can be found on our website at winuskiVT.gov slash STR. And finally, a great way to connect with community is through neighborhood block parties. City council can approve closures of neighborhood streets for block parties. Consider getting with your neighbors to organize a block party to connect your neighbors or connect with city staff and representatives, or both. The city encourages anyone interested to apply for a street closure and let us know if you are interested in partnering with the city department. Members of our public safety team and other staff have often grilled for block, block parties before. The application can be accessed at winuskiVT.gov slash rentals.
Thank you. We will now move to our regular items. Uh, first stop for discussion is a public hearing. So a public hearing has been noticed for the consideration of amendments to the Unified Land Use Development Regulations with, for Act 47 updates. I would like to invite, uh, Revi Venkataram, our Director of City Planning, and, um, Eric Vorwald, our former director, who is joining us via Zoom, to do a little overview before we open it up for public comment. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thanks. Um, I guess I can provide a brief overview. I think Eric's provided a overview for you last month on these proposed regulations. Um, the proposed regulations are mainly to, uh, update with the recent changes in statute, uh, with the passage of Act 47, the Home Act. Most of the edits, uh, proposed edits are, uh, related to, or are in line with what is in the text currently for Act 47. Um, but, uh, the Planning Commission has made extra steps to, uh, increase, uh, opportunities for housing in, um, in the residential areas in the city, uh, and making the process, uh, legible and, uh, more accessible for, uh, for anyone looking to develop housing in, in the city. Yeah, I guess at this point I'll turn it over to you, uh, mayor, if you have, if you and council have any questions for either of us.
I think we're, we're good for now from our last one. Um, so I will open it up to public comment. We do have one attendee on Zoom. If you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please use the raise hand feature. Okay. Seeing no public comment, I will now close the public hearing and we'll move on to item B, which is the council discussion and potential, um, approval of these amendments. So if council has any follow-up questions since our last viewing of these?
I think we've discussed a lot. I think I said it last time, but I'll say it again. This is just one step that we're doing now and we plan to continue to make updates to our codes to make, um, the housing that we need and want built in Winuski, um, more, more achievable. But for now, this is what we need to do to meet Act 47.
All right.
Mayor, if I may, just one.
Yes.
Sorry, but good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Um, I just wanted to note that since you last saw the amendments back in June, uh, at that meeting, there was discussion about, um, potentially adding some additional language in the form-based code in the signage section for the lighting, specifically related to, uh, Energy Star certification or something along those lines. So a new item has been added under section, uh, 608 Part E. Uh, then a new item six has been added and the previous item six has been, is now item seven. So there's new language related to that Energy Star, Energy Star certification related to, to sign lighting. But otherwise, the amendments are the same as what you saw back in June.
Thank you, Eric. Any additional? Does this raise up any additional questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve adoption of these amendments to the Unified Land Use Development Regulations?
Second.
Motion by Aurora, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, amendments are adopted. Thank you so much. Good to see you again, Eric.
Yeah.
Many thanks to our Planning Commission for lots of work that went into this.
Good to see you all as well. Have a pleasant evening.
You too. Okay. Next up is, uh, item C, Commission Appointment Process. So at our second June meeting, there was discussion, some concerns raised about our appointment process and lack of representation across the commission bodies. With this memo, I've identified those concerns that were raised in our sort of current state. I've also included a recommendation to change the advertising process next year, to respond to the primary concern, which was about, uh, the deadline, lack of clarity, and making sure that we have time to review applicants. I also wanted to call out that two, two things in here. One is that these bodies are not the only way, um, or opportunity for community members to be a voice in our decision-making process. And also that our own community engagement strategy is both creating additional opportunity, but an opportunity for us to try to recruit more members and have more representation that we're looking for. These commissions are advisory bodies to our policy work. And so as a group, we are responsible for them and should be, um, you know, leveraging materials and information that staff shares out, but also making sure that we're sharing these opportunities broadly in the community. So what you'll find in here are formal recommendations to update the timeline, to revisit our engagement planning. And if we wish to take up any other process changes, to revisit that decision after we've adopted our strategies and priorities, so that we have the full picture of what we are focused on, what we're going to want to engage commissioners on, and what we're going to want to engage the community on. I would then open up the floor if there are questions about anything in here or like items that folks still want to discuss.
I was wondering about in the recommendation section number two, call out two, the council-facing documents. I'm just wondering how we can specifically call out language access. That doc, uh, document side, but I feel like it would be good to include or acknowledge in some way. Targeted outreach. Access best practice.
Not having a formal plan here to point to, um, are you, are you asking that this is something that we add into like our council community access and engagement procedure?
More like I, I want a place where we, once we have it, linked to it and some kind of, I don't know. I feel like there needs to be some kind of acknowledgement or, or in addition. I think both these documents that are currently linked have some reference to that, but, um, I just feel like as accessible and equitable as possible. Possibly calling out.
I mean, we, I do, there is mention in here in section two about offering interpretation for public meetings.
Um, I have some thoughts around that as well, but I wanted to start with this. I do think like the, the second bullet point that you offer or that you mentioned in here, um, which mentions that services around childcare and language interpretation haven't been requested. I were, I kind of feel like that language is putting the burden on residents rather than, rather than, you know, it seems like we need to rethink how we're like letting folks know that this is an option. I'm not entirely sure, like, that might be something, a working, uh, like you said, a subcommittee or work plan. Or, uh, we have the Inclusion and Belonging Commission, um, giving some specific tasks around, well, how can we make sure people understand that there's child, childcare and language interpretation? To me, the fact it hasn't been used isn't not that needed, but that people don't fully understand that it's there.
Well, to be clear, it has been used at targeted meetings.
Mm-hmm.
It hasn't been requested for commissioner, council.
Yeah.
But I think, again, that a first step is for us, when we're engaging community members, to be sharing that that's an option.
Yep.
Until we have an actual language access plan officially.
Which, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like that's on kind of a ongoing hold.
Well, maybe, I think, so that we make sure that we're calling it out, but I think so that we're getting to your point, Christine. Maybe in the first section, ability to recruit new voices. In that first paragraph before the last bullet, city staff, we add in and that there's an assurance or that it is required that when advertising commissions, people are informed that there are language services and childcare services if people wish to participate in a board or commission. And then it puts it at the beginning in the advertising place, which is where I think it's important to get people who would need those services, we let them know right then when we're advertising. So on any future Instagram post or anything like that, that would be included in that language. But then, because we don't have the formal document, we maybe don't mention it in a second point, but we put it in that advertising section for now. And then later could explore, once we have an actual document, how we link that document into the official process.
Like how we lead with the equal opportunity employment language in our job posts.
Elaine, I would invite, if staff offhand, if you think that's feasible to add a statement into meeting advertisements or commission advertisement.
Uh, Paul, feel free to chime in. My initial comment is that we can do that, uh, but generally, Deputy Mayor, recruitment is more successful done correctly by a member of council and member of staff. So I think to your point, like, making sure that's coming in, that venue is actually impactful, but add that language. Paul, do you have thoughts on that?
No, that's definitely something we can do. I mean, just adding, if it's really specific about interpretation and really specific about childcare services, of course, we can put those disclaimers, um, in advertisements, that's fine. I, we would need, I think, a, a clear operational path to both of those things if they were requested. I think, you know, one of the inherent difficulties there is, right? We, we advertise in English and so, um, creates a bit of a feedback loop. Nobody can sort of respond to there, especially with interpretation services. So happy to put something in there. But yeah, my, my concern initially with doing that is just making sure that we have the, the budget and system figured out for, uh, requesting both of those types of stuff.
To that point, I, I think that, um, it might be worth a trial. Like if we did the advertising to, um, see then there's more demand and that wouldn't be budgeting. Part of the challenges that we have assumed that we can use Thrive Staff for childcare services, but the couple of times we've tried to make that arrangement work for different types, for other kinds of meetings, hasn't worked out. So there, we have some hesitation about offering that. But again, we could trial it, figure out what the demand, if the demand, and then.
I have a logistics question related to that. Is it feasible rather to, rather than trying to coordinate with Thrive Staff to provide those services? Is it feasible to instead provide funds to reimburse folks or provide some type of stipend?
The assumption is we pay them. That isn't, it's the issue of their availability.
I don't think we're, I don't think you're answering my question. Maybe I'm not asking it clearly enough. Is it feasible to reimburse the commissioner for the childcare rather than relying on Thrive Staff for availability or coordination on our staff side of things? Would that make it any easier?
That could be tricky because it would be considered compensation if you get more than $600 a year. Then they would need to report as contractors and then that would hit our first comp.
Which. Yeah, they, they would not likely be considered independent contractors. They would probably need to fill out W-4s and be considered employees, which is how our Inclusion and Belonging Commission members are currently compensated.
That's okay. And we could put a stipend up to, but not exceeding dollars.
Um, for W, for W-4 employees, there is no dollar limit. They would be required to fill out paperwork that would state that they are eligible to work in the U.S.
We could do that, but then if they were individually audited, they would have to be income. So it, we're potentially opening up an issue for, but they, it's a, there's pros and cons.
Right. It's not really a reimbursement if you're taxing folks.
But it would be viewed as income. That's, that's the issue with. We would be creating that issue while we were finding that stipend, that. Also, if they're not eligible to work in the U.S., then we, we, I have not found a legal way where somebody isn't exposed, either them or us, compensated. So again, I'm not, I'm not trying to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. These are some of the considerations I come with and otherwise obvious.
Well, and I think, again, this isn't something we budgeted for. I think it's a fine first step to start with adding this language. See if we, and us doing the work of telling people the service is available and seeing what the demand is before we spend a lot of time going down the rabbit hole of how we would implement.
The one thing I was also wondering with these recommendations, you mentioned in the third about a subcommittee. But to me, that sounds like what's laid out here might better suit the inclusion and belonging commission. We already want them to report on how stipends have, I guess, not improved access. It would make sense to me to, you know, maybe make this an action item for that commission.
Again, yes, could be a recommendation. What I, what I am saying here though is we should not make that third decision until we finish adopting the strategies and priorities. So we know what all is on the table and what we're asking people to engage in. But I think we could, when we get there, consider if this is something we just want to task that group with investigating for us.
So I guess as a follow up to Aurora's question is, why is this conversation on for approval before the FY 25 strategies?
There were logistical challenges, both of them were supposed to be on tonight. There was a miscommunication with Elaine and we have more commission appointments coming after this. And I wanted to address the concerns that came last time so that we wouldn't hold up those appointments as well.
I think one other concern you mentioned here. Bullet four is that the commission set the meetings, but if someone's not on the commission, then they can't be part of setting the meeting. They might not even know that the commission meeting times are more flexible. They might just see, oh, it's at this time, I can't even apply. So I don't know if that's, needs to be laid out in the advertising too, that with new commission members, different times considered, but.
We could certainly incorporate that into next year's advertisement process.
I will go then. I did receive some public comments relating to this item that I'll just read. I think that, I think residency should be a requirement across the board so that the commissioners have the residents' best interests in mind and resident perspective. We have plenty of residents that are also local business owners. And residents that are also representing a variety of expertise. And those, some of those are called out as the categories that are of the best value or greatest need for non-residents. And if that's not something the rest of council supports, then the follow up comment is at a minimum, the chair of the commission should be a resident.
I like the chair thing because there's a decent amount of some of our business owners that don't live in Winuski, but I think that they are incredibly concerned and care about the community. So if they did want to be on a commission, I wouldn't want to shut them out. And I think there are certain commissions where we definitely want, you know, like I'm looking at what the mayor has listed for a housing commission. Like, yeah, a staff member of the HFA. I think would be great to have on the housing commission. So if they didn't live in the city, like I wouldn't want to exclude them from that when that information that they hold would be incredibly, incredibly useful to the commission. With that said, I'm totally down from making it requirement that the chair is a resident.
I did, and then kind of just related the first portion of the comment. I've also been on boards where there's been an ex officio role. So basically a representation, but not a vote. And that wasn't something that we discussed, or at least it wasn't discussed at length and wasn't something that made its way into this memo that I wanted to bring up again with everyone.
Yeah, and then they kind of serve as like a staff member of the commission, giving their expertise, but not. That's interesting.
I'll make a note for potential future. Do you want to move through your own changes?
And then I have some, my own personal comments that I wanted to share. So the primary factor of the way the memo is presented is that it's elected council members that are, have, hold the role, the primary role of recruiting participants. I, I want, I recommend that we have a more collaborative approach. Maybe that is the intent, but it just wasn't clear to me that it was in the framing. Regardless, I would like to see clarity that. That it shouldn't be just the council liaison to a commission that is tasked with recruiting seats alone for that commission. It raises questions of bias for me and introduces potential for inequities. I think that could be something that is held intentionally or unintentionally, just by who you know. Not saying that there's any ill will to it, but having a tendency to attract like minded voices to a commission. Personally, that, I think we want to have representatives from a broad array of perspectives on commissions. And so I do have a little bit of concern if it's simply council and the council liaison that's closest to the commission. That's recruiting members that, again, intentionally or unintentionally, that could introduce some bias. And while it is an advisory body, we tend to regard a great deal of respect for our commissions, especially planning commission and housing commission, where they put endless amount of hours into reviewing documents and policy. So I just caution that regardless of who is sitting at this table, that there could be bias introduced. Again, we're all prone to our own subjective experiences and biases. So I would like to see at least clarity around the collaboration in, again, that may have been the intent. And I think with that, I had made some suggestions about, you know, either it's a collaborative approach. Or perhaps someone other than the council liaison to that commission is recruiting. So I'm the liaison for infrastructure, perhaps another counselor is recruiting and interviewing folks for the infrastructure. Again, just to offer some different perspectives than I might hold being the closest to that commission. But I think those were my primary comments. Relating to this document is just really making sure that we're doing what we can to, to prevent inequities.
Certainly a point well taken about personal bias. I believe, but correct me if I'm wrong, we all tell people about, you know, when you are sharing about we have commission openings, we're sharing all of them out broadly. If I interview someone and we don't select them, I tell them about the other roles that are open. If you meet somebody and they have a clear interest in a commission you don't serve on, you would still tell them. I think we can align on that.
Yeah, I don't think I've actually ever recruited for downtown Winuski. I think it's been everyone else. And I envision that like if we do start tabling at the farmer's market, which is one of the suggestions I talked about. That we were, you know, similar to how we did during the budget, we would take shifts. And we talk about all the commissions and it won't matter who's sitting at that table. But I think there's probably nothing wrong with formally putting that in for the document.
Yeah, I like the idea of, and this is just mostly like as a reminder, that's a good reminder. To advocate for all the commissions and I wonder with that, just, I think we keep each other pretty well up to date on like what, what commissions have openings, but yeah, maybe been making. That more available on a tab in spreadsheet. When we're, we're, we're community access. But just so we know, like, oh, this. This number of members and this type of member.
And I raise this concern, again, not to question anyone that is sitting at this table, again, on. See that there is any intentional selection or recruitment, but. Again, just kind of making sure that we're, we're creating the intent and articulating the intent regardless of who is here. And I mean, there was a New York Times article today about. Officials in New York City filling boards and stacking boards. So to me, this conversation. Is just, again, trying to protect ourselves and future council from even perceptions of bias.
Well, I think these are things that we can certainly document in the orientation that happens each year after town meeting day as the body is updated to align on, this is our position, we're trying to mitigate bias.
And I think generally in summary, I think these are. Changes that are, generally speaking, changes that are welcomed and clearly provide opportunity to offer improvement where it's been needed for a while. So it's, it's not, you know, I'm not disagreeing with the overall intent of the document. Just suggesting and calling out some areas that stood out to me.
Yeah, sure. It's not a process document, right? This was my attempt to summarize where we are, so. But these are things that we can kind of codify in orientation and expectations for whoever's sitting in these. And then a couple of practices for advertisement. So my original intent had been that this meeting schedule would also have strategies and priorities. We'd be able to discuss our community engagement planning, big picture. But I think it's fine at the moment, the, the ideas that Thomas brought up. Because we won't meet again until August 5th if we want to do some sort of recruitment advertisement ahead of that. So I have the monthly in the world of Winuski show for on Town Meeting TV coming up next Tuesday. We could have multiple of us or invite, you know, members of our commissions, have somebody representing each commission. Talk high level, like what are these bodies, what is the opportunity? And then like somebody share like a couple of sentences about each one. And then that recording could be clipped, like we could use it in the future, share it on social media. It's the schedule, it could, it's recorded at Town Meeting TV studios typically at a specific time and date. However, I can invite them here and we could find another time. So I'll follow up after this meeting to try to get something going on that if we can. We are interested in tabling at farmer's market. Looks like there might be interest. Who is best positioned, you're in the engagement role, you are connected with downtown.
Yeah, I, doesn't matter. You have the time, would like to do it, I can give you Sarah's email. Otherwise, I can just email Sarah directly, either way.
If you're able to email Sarah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Just see, actually, well, oh, we do have members of the public in the room. I'll open it up to public comment. If there's any questions or comments, you're welcome to come up and join us. Maybe here for a different topic though, that's totally fine. I'll also open it up for our Zoom attendee, raise hand feature if you have a question. Okay. Seeing no additional comments. I would propose. A motion to direct staff to implement the changes to advertisement of commission seats in 2025, the timeline. Direct staff to include a notice in commission advertisements about interpretation and childcare services available. For the mayor to update the annual council orientation templates with the statements about mitigating bias and all opening, all, all trying to find people for representation across commissions. And to revisit potential additional changes in community engagement planning after adoption of the strategies and priorities.
Do we want to add any requirement if there are changes in the residency?
I prefer to hold until the further follow up discussion. Unless there's strong feelings that people want to advance that. My, my thought is if we're going to make procedural changes like that, I would want to engage some commissioners.
That's wrong.
That seems fair. Okay. I didn't write that down. The full motion. I'm going to need it for Jenny. Apologies. Okay, the motion is to direct staff to implement changes to the advertisement process of commission seats in 2025. And to include a notice in commission advertisements about interpretation and childcare services available. And direct the mayor to update our council orientation and revisit the other items after adoption of the 2025 strategies. Motion by Bryn, second by Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm curious, thank you. We will move on to item D then. The appointments to airport commission, planning commission and development review board. We'll welcome Reddy back.
Yeah, I can provide some background for the DRB and planning commission review. For the planning commission, we, and the DRB, we received four applicants. We interviewed three of them and by we, I mean, planning commission chair, Mike O'Brien, mayor Christine Lott, and I interviewed three of them and decided to recommend appointment of John Baker. We believe that John's experience in the construction industry and in architecture would provide a benefit for the planning commission. With the DRB, based on the applications that we received, we recommended reappointment of all the current members. This one, I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
And then for airport commission, council Oakley and I interviewed three candidates and are recommending Connor Daly based on extensive existing knowledge and strategic thinking about community engagement with. Any questions from council? Oh, well, you're here. Do you want to come up and say anything? You don't have to.
No, it's been two years and I think it's time. No, thank you very much. I just, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm particularly excited about the prospect of being appointed to the airport commission. I love Winuski, I love everything that you all do and the staff. I think you all know that by how often I'm around. So, no, I'm, I'm really excited about the opportunity to serve in this way. Happy to answer questions.
I don't believe any of our other applicants are going to answer. Any questions for Connor?
Just as someone else that was on the interview panel, we had three excellent applicants. Really nice to see interest from the community in the commission. It's a new seat, still fairly new to Winuski. It'll be the first time that we offer it to to a resident. It was previously held by city staff and then a previous counselor until I took over for this past year. The position would be held for the remaining year of a three-year period. And one thing that Connor offers that that I think of of the many reasons is not just a natural tendency to be interested in aviation topics as a hobby, but also your experience as a renter. So we are happy to present that to council.
Any questions about any of our other recommended appointees?
That's great. Good knowledge.
Any questions for members of the public? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments to the Airport Commission, Planning Commission, and Development Review Board?
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we are on item E, on for discussion or approval. Introduction of amendments to Winuski Code Chapter 15 Parking. It should just be discussion, right?
It's just discussion.
Yeah, okay.
So I should say Angela did the bulk of carrying the water on this for staff, which given that it's parking. But Angela has been here a long time, seen everything, and definitely had a lot of knowledge to provide. So just to summarize the the many changes, I know there's probably questions to ask in this, but this is introduction to these, to this concept of before we do any further. So we did open this chapter in order to update the winter parking ban area for the downtown and took the opportunity to clarify a bunch of other items, either clean up, clarify language, and update other language. In some cases, we deleted language for practices we have not done and are not able to staff. Those are described in the cover sheet for those that are following along at home or to lay them out here. So for example, doubling fines for overtime fines at day one, we have a mechanism for tracking that, that change in time. Publishing a notice in the paper if the owner of a vehicle can't be identified, that is, we don't feel like that would actually be effective these days. So why do that? Also, it it barely happens. Procedure to reclaim a stored vehicle, also not very staffable. And allowing customers to park on the street under a small business permit that we wouldn't know if that person was a customer of a business or not. So those have all been stricken. The two substantive changes we have made are to fines. So those are in 15.03.01, increased fine for parking in an accessible parking space to match the amount of state traffic violation, increased fine for unpaid meter to higher than 12 hours of hourly parking. And then in that same section, except under 03, scoff law, reduce the number of violations qualifying a vehicle for scoff law regulations from more than three to two. We added a boot fee to encourage compliance. Currently, sometimes we'll get booted and then there's no fine, as I understand it. So it is, it does cost the city something to. Angela, do you have anything you want to highlight or add at this point?
Um, so changes to the penalties was something that had been raised by city council during the budgeting process and was discussed at the parking team when we opened up this chapter. A lot of the discussion around this chapter was had with our code enforcement department and our public safety admin who actually complete a lot of this work. And so a number of the amendments are meant to reflect the work that is actually going on rather than what they deemed ideal when this was written. So this is what practice currently is in most cases.
Great. I I can kick us off. My one question is about the section 15.03.01. I'm sorry, no, the one above it. Just 15.03, fines, penalties, and scoff law. The fine range is expanding from five minimum, 250 max, to 20 minimum, 600 max. But I don't see like a fine that align, like, why is it 600?
Handicap penalties will double after 14 days and become $600.
Anyone else?
Just in this section, there's maybe some medical things. Council heard there's always some point with stuff like that. 1503, should it say, and no more than $600? No more? Is what it reads. And then I think there's one other thing stood out to me, but 150303, the blue font feels like it should be in front of the two in parentheses, or at least two. Have some up in that areas.
The first two in parentheses is enumeration. So one, $100, or two, more than violations.
That was confusing. I was wondering why you would put two parentheses for that section.
We can probably clean up the formatting there and have those in list format rather than paragraph format.
I think that would be helpful. Yeah. Yeah, and I guess below two where it goes, this A, B. Yeah, thank you.
My one question is the fire hydrant flash lane blocking and the the amount there. Just wondering, that that seems like a heftier violation.
But I assume the T discussed that through. Lines of state law regulations?
It's not a common violation that we write, except in one very specific location. Tenzin did not feel that it needed to be increased. He felt that it was sufficient penalty for the few times that he's issuing it. The only one where we really wanted to increase the penalty, where we were hearing and seeing people specifically acting contrary to what we would like, is people were intentionally not paying parking meters because they were chancing getting a $12 fine rather than having to pay the meter. So that was the one where we wanted to increase it to make it an actual penalty for not turning over those spaces.
Have we received any input or feedback from?
I haven't spoken to them about it, but I know that they are fans of turning over the parking.
Elaine, I had, I shared with you in advance, I've had some community questions about the winter parking ban in the downtown and why the downtown is a permanent four-month, unlike the rest of the city. Someone just share for the public good, the operational implications of that?
Right, so it is, I understand it's frustrating when you go out and there's, it's not snowing necessarily, but we have a limited number of plow crew on staff, so it accommodates snow hauling. We haul snow post storms and it takes, sometimes it takes multiple days to clear out that snow, to remove snow banks, to allow clear access to buildings. So note that the downtown ban area only includes paid parking spaces, that is short term. The parking garage is available for offsite. Understanding that it's not necessarily ideally located for for the trade offs that we make in a
Thanks Elaine. And in section 15.14A, A1B, the streets that delineate the downtown area are listed. Might it be possible to link to our zoning map that visually shows where that range is?
Yes, so on the, we, Eric actually created that before he left, so it is ready to go to me on the website. Most people probably aren't getting the ban areas from the ordinance, they would look at a map.
Yeah.
That is the thing.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's a good point of clarification on that. Is that, that's a different map than the one we're currently using on the website? Winuski BT.gov?
Statute, that's why we went through the parking to exercise and have this on the ordinance. Correct, so there Lee Rebbie knows where that is, if not, we can ask Eric.
That one sounds good. It's a little jarring to be discussing winter parking bans during this heat, hot weather, but yeah, I'll make another pitch again for everybody who's here. All of our parking information is at winuski BT.gov.
Did have a couple of questions. And I apologize, I didn't get to share these until yesterday. I'm just curious if we have any data related to instances relating to the proposed changes? So the way it's presented is that these are necessary to mitigate staff burden? Is that accurate?
Some of it is, like the ones that I said were struck. Some of it, like Angela said, is it's, I'm not sure why, but current practices don't quite match with the jury that's written out in the ordinance. And so in in terms of data, it's either not, it's not getting done now, or it's already being done this way. So I don't, I don't know what data we would have to provide. Because it's not, this wouldn't actually represent, just catching up the
Because I, go ahead, sorry.
Some of it is also clarifying internally, there was some ambiguity specifically in the resident parking permit section about what you needed to bring to prove residency and what was acceptable and how many guest permits you get. So we were codifying things that have come up so that there is a reference point that anybody can look at.
And I guess I ask these questions because the perception is that staff, there's, there's enough instances that it's requiring measurable staff time to warrant removing them. Is the perception.
I think Angela, correct me if I'm wrong, but those pieces were like, it's not happening anyway, so why, why require something?
Or not able to do, yeah, in in many of those cases. Or it was language changes. So there was a whole section that I struck that said that we were going to delineate parking lines at every meter. We don't have individual meters at every space, so that section was completely struck because we don't comply with our own ordinance. Procedure to reclaim stored vehicles was struck from ordinance because it's a procedure, it should be an internal document, does not need to be documented into ordinance.
Yeah, nor, nor do we have funds for line striping or for that, like.
Well, I think that that was before we had owned parking.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions for members of the public? Or online? Okay. It sounds to me these are all clarifying questions. We haven't actually asked you to do anything different, so I imagine we'll see this back at a future meeting in similar condition.
Okay, thanks. We'll run it by the attorney next to make sure we didn't miss anything obvious. I tried to get him not to do the copy editing, but sometimes he does it still. It might all get caught there.
All right.
We'll bring it back once he's
Moving on to item F for discussion, strategic vision goal updates. Who's first, Ray?
So yeah, so last one for the fiscal year that just ended. And I think by and large, things are moving decently. Again, you'll see one area here around fire that has slowed. And then some notes about some community center developments that have sort of slowed progress there, but I would say not in a concerning way, just again, with the environmental discoveries and the due diligence. It's added a few steps to the process, but overall, I think that's still well. So happy to answer any questions on items here and certainly Elaine and I, we can try to field questions for the chiefs as well.
I have one question, which noted that input, community inputs started to come on the library. I was just wondering, I had a little
Yeah, sure.
How that's working.
Yep, so we have tabled Winuski Wednesdays and the Farmer's Market and also done some informal kind of data gathering in the library itself. We are actually meeting tomorrow with the architectural team and are going to be finalizing a schedule for a large public engagement meeting. And as that feedback has come in and as we've, as staff, looked at designs, we're kind of workshopping the architectural layout and are planning to have something to bring forward at that public engagement session. Trying to get, I think, the big pieces sorted out so that we can then bring that forward to talk about, have something Yeah, and we will plan to be, we were going to be at the last Winuski Wednesday, which obviously got, had some weather impacts. And I believe Nate has one more Farmer's Market table scheduled this month.
If folks haven't seen the survey that they did, it was pretty cool. There's two check mark on which one
I will say it's been interesting what Nate was sharing, is a lot of community members were like, well, what do you want? Just tell us what you need. It's like, no, no, this is like, you tell us what you want. We really do want that community input.
And so they trust the library.
Yeah, no, it is, it is. But I think with a little arm twisting, we were able to get them to actually.
Any other questions on this?
Um, Jerry's about item eight relating to Memorial Park.
Yep. So we are working right now with the Park District on just finalizing engagement there and figuring out what that might look like and bringing something back to propose to council. I think that hit a little bit of a hiccup for reasons, and so it was on a back burner for a bit, but we are back meeting with them, met with them last month, have a schedule of weeks with them and are trying to move that forward. So a little bit slower than we'd hoped it was progressing, but it's moving ahead. And we'll go back and have certainly the latest by budget time. That can be that process.
And is there any related updates to the latest?
Latest incident? Oh, with the encampment?
Right.
So I've been working pretty closely with Chief Hazinga the last six, eight weeks. We've seen a, seen a big increase in encampments throughout our parks. I actually just was out doing a post flood walk today and there's Passavan. I haven't gotten up to Gilbrook this week, but heard there's activity there. So, you know, we're continuing as Justin's staff has availability to try to make So, you know, we're continuing as Justin's staff has availability to try to make contact. We always give a period of time, usually forty-eight to seventy-two hours for folks to move along, so it's not, you know, get out now, it's, hey, are you, do you need help? Can we connect you to services? And this is not a place where you can be keeping. So we're trying to take an empathetic approach, again, as police resources are available, we always use them as our first point of contact, just because we don't know what we're walking into, and especially with some of the concern around that's something really cautious about, like that. So in terms of the Memorial Park piece, that is clean, I was just down there today. We worked with a contractor to come in and do that cleanup, as you all saw, that request, so that is wrapped up and looking much better.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, should we move on to housing or municipal infrastructure?
Lead him to it.
Good evening. So this will be the last housing update for the 2023, 2024 policy priorities and strategies updates. So I'm not going to go through all of them from the table because almost all of them are essentially in the last update, which is good, because many of them have been completed. So the one that I will highlight is the last kind of catchall item of continuing to explore updating ordinances and the UL UDR regulations to address housing priorities. So the first point, the Housing and Planning Commissions met both in March and in June to discuss changes related to IZ and replacement ordinances. And it was determined by the Planning Commission that they were going to prioritize the replacement ordinance language for now. We are planning to join again in September to continue talking about the inclusionary zoning portion and developer incentives as well. The update on renter protections is the same as last month, just, or a few months ago, just kind of on hold for now. And then an update on short-term rental progress. So as Elaine mentioned, that new license system started on July 1st, so it's now in operation. Rollout has been pretty successful. It's been a good teamwork, I think, between myself, Jenny in the clerk's office, and Angela, finance department. So far, as of today, so we've had one more since Friday, we've had nineteen applications received, so those are for nineteen individual short-term rental units. Some owners had like three, some just one. Sixteen have been conditionally approved, so that means that their owner occupancy has been verified if that was the license they were applying for. They're up to date on all fees, taxes, they're on the public building registry and inspected, and just waiting for them to pay their invoice now. Seventeen out of the nineteen applications that we have received have been for non-owner occupied properties, so that's clearly signaling that a large portion of the short-term rentals in the city are owned by people that don't live in Winuski. Most of them, I think actually all of them have been local towns other than Winuski, at least the mailing addresses of the owners, and then just two for owner occupied. I think we might get more for the owner occupied when the public building registry mailer goes out, but for right now, it's significantly more non-owner occupied, which is not great. We do obviously make more money from those licenses, so that is nice to see, and I, I think we probably will end up on the very high side of like what we had forecasted because we had done a conservative estimate of like a fifty-fifty split, and it's certainly looking like it will not be a fifty-fifty split. So thus far, the city has billed for twenty-one thousand dollars in license fees. A portion of that will be going, obviously, as we had discussed during the budget season, to kind of make the code enforcement, the public building registry hole, and then the rest going to the housing trust fund. So it's great to get some money going in there. I do anticipate hopefully two more waves of applications. So the July newsletter, Paul has been gracious enough to add, I asked for front page of real estate, so just an update, just, I figure wherever we can get it in front of people, just in case they're not aware, because most of the applications we have gotten were people I had talked to previously who had, I had kept their emails. So hopefully a wave after that goes out, and then another, I assume the largest wave will be from the public building registry mailer. There will be a half sheet that's going out that explains the new regulations, and then gives the information for where they can go to the website to fill out the applications. They do have until November to comply, so we gave ninety days for the first year, so quite a bit of time. And then two of the applications have received, revealed properties that were either not on the public building registry or had not been inspected for many years. So it has been good to see that the program provides good leverage essentially for people to comply to the other, you know, requirements for a public building. So, yeah, a few of them had been like longstanding issues that we've been trying to resolve, so it's nice to be able to have another reason to get in contact with them. Kind of other operational updates, the equitable housing needs assessment, so the municipal planning grant project is nearing the final stages of selecting a bid and drafting a contract with the Chosen Consultant Group. Five bids were received and three were selected to be interviewed. Hopefully we will be finalizing that contract within the next few weeks, so we can announce who it is, but we're very happy with the bids that were received. The reappraisal is complete, as I'm sure you are aware. Grievance hearings with the assessor have concluded. Following the grievance hearings over a two-week span, notices were mailed to all property owners who filed a grievance. The notices stated whether the grievance was approved or denied. At the time of mailing, June 27th, the property owner has fourteen days to submit an appeal to the BCA. The BCA has a meeting on July 17th at 5:00 PM, and as part of the agenda is to approve the appeals on September 11th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. At this time, the city has received fourteen appeals, so at fifteen minutes each, there might need to be a reconvening until the next day. Following the BCA appeal, the board will decide to inspect the property or deny the appeal. And then just the last item, landlord survey that goes out with the public building registry mailer every year has been finalized, that will be going out with all the materials, I think Chris is aiming for the 22nd now. So in addition to the kind of generic questions that we ask every year that we've been able to use in kind of the, the housing and affordability conversations recently, this year, the Housing Commission and myself have decided to include questions relating to if property owners were aware if their property could increase density, so it gives them the option of saying, if, you know, if they're aware, yes, no, and then if they're unsure, it gives the contact information for Revi, so that they can kind of talk that through, because I think a lot of people probably are unaware. It then asks if they were interested in increasing density, because, just because they can doesn't mean that they want to. And then if they are interested, if they would be open to sharing their email for future efforts, events, programming, trainings related to infill development, kind of as the ADU conversation continues post Act 47, it's great to kind of have a list of people who are interested in engaging in those kind of events, especially, yeah, in discussions with state, you know, the For All Program, there are many kind of ADU related things. So having like a ready list of people who have consented to giving their emails for people who are interested in infill, I think will be really valuable for us. And then again, at the end, kind of, we always try to plug resources for property owners, but information relating to the HIP program, VHIP, Efficiency Vermont Programming for rental properties specifically, and then for the Burlington LED program.
Love the survey changes, Jasmine.
Yeah, the short-term rental ones. I asked short-term rental ones last year and like no one answered them, so I was like, we don't need to answer those, or ask those again clearly, but.
Any questions from council?
I am curious, and I bring it up every couple of months, about homes that are recently demolished or likely are on pending renovation, and if there's any ongoing factor outreach property over there for.
Yeah, I mean, I know John is in, John, John is more in contact, at least I know, properties.
Yeah, I, I don't think he really does that because it's private property, we don't have leverage over them. If it's actually a safety issue, then he's absolutely on top of those, but that's actually.
Yeah, but I will say, for like larger properties, more vaguely, obviously, we're attempting to engage in conversations to have influence over what those are redeveloped into, without saying too much at this point. And then, yeah, I mean, we're speaking to a few other, like smaller projects, are attempting to harness funding that would require affordable units, but yeah, there are definitely, yeah, conversations, nothing public yet.
Yep, it's mainly what I wanted to know, we're doing intentional proactive outreach about infill for no rentals, so to me, it seems logical that we would engage to some extent with properties where we know that there is opportunity.
Yeah, I will say any planned project right now does have some level of affordable units. Yeah, it's just kind of a TBD to see, it seems like a few of them have slowed their progress a little bit, so might just be greater market issues that everyone's struggling with right now, but.
Okay. The question I have is around just cause eviction. I brought this up with the mayor, but I wanted to raise it in the meeting too, just considering the outreach I've heard from constituents, and just kind of the general concern that it's, we're waiting until the March election. I understand, like the staffing reason, and it'd be a all-resident issue that can be voted on, but I just really wanted to raise it up, especially because I understand August has kind of come and gone, but especially with October, so that then the vote will happen before the new Vermont legislature goes into session. Just really wanted to raise that and, you know, understand why, especially when it was not entirely our fault, but it looks like our fault that it didn't go through correctly, that we're not correcting it. Again, I understand the staffing. I don't think residence necessarily, like our duty to the residents.
So it's a little different now because Taylor's not running again. Back, and I mentioned that because both Taylor and Daisy have confirmed with us that they consider themselves directed by that vote. So we need, we, we, staff has not delivered on the change petition yet, but we still have to go through that, but with both, with our delegation in charge of doing something with that, feeling like it, we, yes, we heard you, it's procedural from our, it reduced the urgency for us and made me want to defer staff capacity. Now that Taylor's not running, it's a little different because who knows what the new person thinks. Also, it's a new legislature, last, the last session, it was very clear early on that it wasn't going to go anywhere last session. So, yeah, it's, there's limited staff time to do all the things that, again, my answer to that one.
Can you refresh my memory on the language? Wasn't there something that needed to be corrected or that wasn't entirely accurate on the language that voters?
So the original, what we thought we could use to cure it was that the procedure of the town meeting was conducted, was done improperly. We had planned on that, we had scheduled it, we're like, yep, we're going to fix it this election. And then too close to the election, VLCT attorney said, that will not cure your problem. The problem you made, the issue you created was that it wasn't, the hearings didn't happen, so it was pre the town, the Watson statute cures errors of town meetings, not what happened. That means we have to start the whole thing fresh.
So what I'm hearing is, from your answer, is that it doesn't have anything to do with the language that went to voters?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, my recollection was that something in that language was no longer accurate, but I'm misremembering, I guess.
No, it might have, that, I think that pressure might have been created by the cure language, which is moot.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying.
Didn't the VLCT war, like lawyers, like it's almost sounds like we got two different answers from them.
That's, yes, that's what happened. So it's a very uncommon occurrence, and so I, I'm sympathetic to them, because basically I made the same error, and so they, we, I've never done this before, they rarely see issues like, they rarely see voter back petitions, let alone fixing errors in warning thereof, so yes, we were following VLCT attorney advice the first time, and we are also following it this time.
Would it be, if, with staff capacity, would it be possible to have it as part of the October vote?
Well, if we end up with a different voter back petition, which we might during that one, then actually it might make sense to find them sometime, October.
So I just wanted to comment about having something on the general election attached to it, because that would be a separate ballot, all residents can vote, and then we're separating the tables. There'd also be a cost impact, be about two thousand dollars to have separate ballot attached to the, plus managing it, be a very busy election, and then to make sure that our all residents only receive the one ballot, logistically, a little difficult. A special meeting would also be a cost, or about how many people will turn out for that vote, so it's a hard one.
As you'll recall, I had a resident asking for funding for annual control, so they might be collecting signatures, or Jenny got an inquiry from that person today, and gathering signatures. So if that comes in in time, we would be required to put on a separate ballot, and so then it might make, because it would be, it wouldn't be, the expense would be combined with that.
If that comes in in time for August or for November?
November, it's out, it's not going to be in.
Okay.
Might it be helpful if you could reshare with council at some point soon, the like steps and timeline that's involved with the, having to do the hearings and notice?
Sure.
So we could see how it aligns with the election schedule?
Bad advice, plus two thousand dollars to.
Well, one attorney, when I spoke to the one attorney, I'd actually drafted the language to go on the ballot for Marshall election, and then I always had spoken to just one attorney, and so the other attorney, I reached, you know, not asking for the other one, he's like, he was out, so let me help you. And then he consulted with another attorney there, and that's what I, the, that was only, what I was referencing as a ballot item was only referencing if there was an error at town, doesn't at town meeting, timeline.
I agree with you that I wish it would be earlier, but my one thinking is, the legislature. I agree with you that I wish it would be earlier, but my one thinking is the legislature won't come into session until January anyway. If it has to be March, it's just two months after they've been there. So it's not like they.
It is, you know, because they might hit crossover. So then the chances of it getting acted on it. That's what happened last time.
That's, that's my, that's my concern.
I'm happy to. Go ahead.
Even though we had the error, our bill is still on the wall, so I don't actually think we have to worry too much about crossover. I mean, it's something to put up there, but it's still there. It just needs to move from.
Yeah, it just, it depends on how whoever's voted in. And others, and see the tailor making, interprets that direction.
And I am happy to post primary vote, contact our likely representation and gain insight into what they, how they feel about.
Right, like, yeah, if it has to be March, like, we can do that advocacy in, after the primary.
I also will contact committee chair. To see if they intend already to move this forward or not.
Are there since we had our vote, are there other municipalities that voted on the topic?
Was it earlier after us as well?
I think they were all at the same time.
At the same time, but it was Essex and Hartford.
And it was, all of those got voted and the legislature tabled all of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nobody's voted since.
Right.
It was in that context that Taylor especially was like this way or this, want a statewide solution. But again, legislature is turning over, so who knows?
Any other questions on housing? Let's invite John online for the municipal infrastructure update.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thanks. So yeah, similar to the other updates, this is our fourth and final municipal infrastructure update for the 2023 and 2024 period. Our list is fairly small, but it's very expensive, as you probably all know. So we have most, and some of them you can see real time. So obviously the Main Street project and Abenaki Way project are in construction. So Abenaki Way, that project, they're, they're still doing some of the geotechnical work, the foundation work for the garage structure, which will also accommodate the housing and hotel units. So it's not included in this memo, but speaking with the developer this week, their target date is to start overbuild construction, meaning the, the housing and hotel work in October. So we are planning to have a meeting with the Division of Fire Safety folks regarding permitting work for those units at the end of this month. We haven't seen any design plans for those yet, but, so that is moving along. Pretty well, but the, the foundation work is, is a bit slower than your initial schedule. I think our original schedule that we received from the contractor for the project was that the garage would be completed by July. So that's obviously not the case. So it looks like more like this winter, the, the city-owned portion of the project would be completed. So that's sort of the latest on the, the Abenaki garage work. I'll pause there quick if you have any questions on, on that project.
Not seeing any.
Main Street, pretty, that one's pretty easy to track. Just got to drive on Main Street. So typically, they're primarily focused right now is you're aware on the underground utility improvements, so mainly sanitary sewer, storm sewer and water work. That works progressing as scheduled. They are still holding a November 25, 2025 end date for total construction, so a two-season construction project. So the project itself, it's, you know, at least on our, on our end, it's a lot of troubleshooting day to day, so that is taking up most of our staff time. Not surprisingly, because we're dealing with, you know, underground 100-year-old infrastructure. So sometimes we're finding that pipes were they, you know, weren't necessarily shown on a survey or plan, which isn't too surprising. So we have to react pretty quickly to keep the, the contractor on schedule. So other than that, it's been going fairly smoothly. Excuse me. As I mentioned, our public outreach team, we've received about 62 comments to date. That's from February, so that's actually not too bad, you know, maybe 10 comments inquiries a month on the project. So outreach seems to be going well. Obviously, there's, there's a lot of support through through Paul on the communication side, downtown Wuski. So we're, there's a lot of, a lot of staff time wrapped up on that project right now. Any questions on Main Streets?
No questions, but I was saving this instead of doing it earlier. The businesses along Main Street are really hurting at the moment. I don't think it's a surprise to anybody. In your communications, and I know some of you have already been doing pushes to remind people the Main Street businesses are open. But I spoke to a business recently who is wondering if they're going to be able to make it through the construction. So really just important that we continue to remind people that it's open and that they can, that there is parking available and like, because I think some people see that the businesses are open, but they don't think there's anywhere they can park. So, you know, we don't want to do this amazing project that, you know, we hope will increase our economic prosperity and lose businesses in the process. And I know that staff has been doing a lot of work to make sure in the signs and everything, so it's not a criticism on anyone. It's just what is happening at the moment. So the more we can be vocal and, you know, I don't think I can directly direct staff to do so, but if staff can be vocal on, on the fact that those businesses are open and would love for you to stop in or get takeout.
Yeah, that's.
Or buy, yeah.
That's great. Yeah, that's great feedback. So Paul and I were actually on a outreach call today with WSPR Outreach Consultants and Downtown Wuski, brainstorming some additional efforts that we can help with promoting businesses. So we can take that feedback to them as well and, and think about some other ideas to try to just get more, more folks in the door and supporting businesses on, on the Main Street.
Has there been any plans to meet with the Agency of Commerce and Community Development staff?
I know that Melissa's had conversations.
A meeting is on the schedule.
Yes. The question commissioner.
Lindsay Harrow.
There's three of them. Curly, Helen.
Right, Commissioner Harrow. So, yeah, we, the T-term grant, we were turned down, but that commissioner and there was a full court press, including you, to try and get them to reconsider. Unfortunately, they called their decision final, but they offered to convene like basically like under a meeting to help us brainstorm what might be available.
Is that, is that meeting something that additional counselors can attend if we have time?
I would not suggest having five people show up. Maybe two? I can pass along the time and date.
Just want to continue offers.
Yeah.
Great, and now I'll keep going and everyone's all set. Excuse me, and the last big project, the Wuski River Bridge, no major updates for this group on the bridge project. I will say the, the project team is doing a lot of work as far as the typical project coordination. So today, for example, we met with the B-Trans to review some of the stormwater permitting required for the bridge that would impact Wuski. We, we also recently had a meeting with GMP to look at electrical relocation. So pretty standard fare project coordination work. And I believe there, there will be, they are targeting probably another public outreach meeting this fall is, is last I heard. So that's probably the next really big sort of public meeting related to the bridge project right now, but mostly just standard coordination work at this point.
Council for that committee, I have not been asked for any additional advisory meetings. Talking away with the input that they received thus far, so.
And then finally, the last three are sort of planning-ish items. Bike pads wrapped up at this point, and I think some of those recommendations will be part of the, probably our next budgeting cycle discussion. And then similar to the number five, the infrastructure financial needs item that was discussed during FY25 budget process, but will obviously continue into FY26 budget. And, and going forward probably forever because, you know, it's infrastructure, so. And then just a quick update on the fountain Dion scoping study. Our plan is to bring that back to you in August. So based on the feedback we heard at the May 6 meeting, we're, we're advising some plans. I will share those out ahead of that, well ahead of the August meeting, just to eventually get some feedback before we come back to you all in August. So and then as Councilor Oakleaf mentioned, we'll, we'll kind of be discussing that then next infrastructure meeting this week. So with that, I'll turn it back to you all.
On the scoping study, are you anticipating that at the second August meeting? We have two in August, right?
There's only one, so it's August 5th.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from members of the public? Can you come up here to the microphone, please? About any of the myriad topics that we just had staff review.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, can you introduce yourself, please, and state if you're a resident or not?
Uh, yeah, I'm a resident of Wuski. My name's Eli Ogulvy. I was just curious about, do we, I know I can't really say what owners are currently facing the impact, but do you know how much percentage their sales are down or which sectors are hit the hardest?
On, on terms of the Main Street, so for the most part, folks are down about 40% in what they've taken in since the construction started. Some are more and some are less than that, but the average is about 41.
All right, thank you. That was my last question.
Thank you. Any questions or comments online? Okay. Hearing no further comments, we'll move on to item G. The strategies and priorities retreat summary. So as mentioned earlier, initial intent had been to accompany this with the actual document. However, sorry about that. This memo, yeah, we'll, we'll sort it out tomorrow. This communication. This memo attempts to summarize the meeting, what we sort of aligned on leaving it, and then also pulls out some data highlights as another effort to, you know, be transparent and share this out with the community. So what I am looking for tonight is just if this looks generally acceptable or if there are changes needed for it to reflect our shared experience.
I do believe it reflects our shared experience. I do have one comment slash question, the very last point in E. And we, it talks about not anticipating any large bond votes. And then it goes on to say only smaller street reconstruction, including water lines, sewer lines, ADA work. And I know that we've seen a document several times that lists all of the water work that we have to do.
Yeah.
And I know that those individual projects are not necessarily $23 million items like Main Street. But when you add them all up, they may be more than like $23 million. So we know we're likely going to have to bond for those things. We're probably going to have to do it before 2028. But I don't know if I necessarily agree with stating that we're not going to need any large bonds. Because I think that we likely will.
It's also, I'm backing onto that because just thinking about how much requests have come in for sidewalk work and how expensive that has been estimated to be just for curbing. Yeah, so I had a similar follow-up question.
They just like 10 to 20 years, I feel like we're going to do a lot of that work in 10 to 20 years. Again, it may not be one big giant bond. It might be a lot of smaller ones, but I just don't want it to seem like we're saying, like essentially, if the voters requested, you know, three times for $5 million bonds, that's a lot of money. I'd consider that at that point, we've asked for a large amount in bond dollars. I don't know if what I'm saying is making.
It does, it does. So John, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what I recall or what I had noted during the discussion from staff is that ADA sidewalk work would be incorporated into annual paving. And then the additional bond votes for street reconstruction would be along the lines of like a Hickok Street rebuild. But do we anticipate many of those or having them frequently or like one every several years?
Yeah, I think what may be helpful to look at this is I will go back with my team and we can give you a longer lead schedule than the typical five-year capital plan for what we are forecasting for street reconstruction. That's feasible because as, as Councilor Renner mentioned, there's, there's a long list of streets that are listed on the Water Me Master Plan List that are recommended for replacement. You know, in the next 10 to 20 years. But we also have to overlay that with streets that, you know, are, have a poor roadway surface that we want to dovetail with doing paving work. So that might be more helpful as far as giving you an outline of what we are forecasting for those capital projects. Your initial response, so yes, our plan is that when we're doing resurfacing work, we are taking care of the ADA curb ramps. And if there are small sections of sidewalks that we can do internally, we, we have the capacity to do like you know, a few sidewalk blocks here and there that we can internally, our DPW team can do, then that, that would be our goal. Larger curbing work and, and long, you know, 200 foot, 200 foot plus sidewalk projects will require a contractor to do. So I think we just need to do a more detailed look on giving you a forecast for what that reconstruction, those reconstruction projects will look like over the next 10 to 20 years. And maybe that'll help answer some of those questions.
Would it be helpful to make an edit? Staff did not anticipate new large bound bond votes over the next 20, 20 years. Similar example, $23 million Main Street project. But do you anticipate meeting several smaller street reconstruction bonds? Example, $3 million. And it's followed by a list of.
I think I like, I think I like that language more.
Okay.
And by no, I, I think we need to do that work. So I'm not actually saying that. I oppose doing those bonds, just we have something in the document. I like it to set expectations as, as well as we can.
Yes, agreed. Anything else that may not be clear enough? Anything else that may not be clear enough?
I don't know with the stuff out of our control. If there should be some note that. All right, I'm not, not getting the words right, but like some note about how advocacy at the state and federal level is needed for these things outside of our control.
That's a funny question because the finance commission input for the link, what's being used in the newsletter was to have like a call to action like that.
Yeah.
So I can add a statement in section B. Oh, and so the goal would be, I would like to give Elaine an updated document to put on, um, the agenda. So when we do the mayor's update this week, people would see the, these edits.
And maybe say something in addition to that statement, maybe just add something to the list.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions from members of the public? Or folks on Zoom? Oh, no one on Zoom anymore, okay. Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the City Council Strategies and Priorities Retreat Summary memo with the edit to the sentence about small bond votes and, um, the sentences in what's outside of control about state advocacy and non ex.
Almost.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Charlie, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And carries, thank you. Okay, so last, not least, our final item H, which we added during agenda review. Uh, on for discussion, a sidewalk permit for Golden Hour. Jenny, do you want to come up and just tell the full council what happened, why we're heading this on late?
Thank you. Um, so previously, uh, just trying to be consistent about the sidewalk permits. So Golden Hour had never applied for one, um, or reached out about it. So I reached out to the businesses, Scout, Autumn Records and Golden Hour, um, about, because since they don't serve liquor, they wouldn't come under our normal review process. And Golden Hour submitted the application, um, June 21st. And I followed up by saying, I just need additional documentation payment. Um, and I received the additional documentation today at 10:40, 10:54 AM, which was the certificate. And Golden Hour has requested that, um, they really are in need of the services, the tent. Uh, they anticipate that their sales would be down 20 to 40% without the tent is what they're looking for, so. The city manager and, and mayor, thank you for bringing this up. Missed the timeline because I said I needed it by Friday, but it's here today.
I had suggested that we ask council for intent for, for an official action next, uh, month in August 5th so that they could operate and we could enforce that they don't have official, just have a sense. Understand, like they, they, they didn't fully understand, did a permit, this is sort of a transition, um, good faith effort that they're making.
I think it makes sense, I mean, they have the space and I know they use a tent at their Burlington location, so I can picture what they're trying to do here, so I'm all for it.
Yeah, I don't have concerns.
Questions from the public? Okay, well, it will be on for approval next month. Thanks for sharing your intent, considering it, and we'll follow up with the owner.
Thanks.
That is the end of tonight's agenda. Were you here for anything in specific or like public comment or just coming? Okay, I just want to make sure you got what we need. Thanks for coming.
We're glad that you're here.
All right, that is the end of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Bryn, second by Charlie, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.